Regular board meeting to order. Kami, please let the record show that all board members are in attendance. We have Charles Taylor, who has a work commitment that he will leave at the appropriate time, so you'll make note of that. At this time, we'll turn it over to Stephen to lead us through our next couple items.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Tonight, we're joined by a student from Bisset Elementary School, Owen Stronghaner. Owen, would you come forward, please? Owen is a fifth grader and is an outstanding example of what it means to be a Bisset Bobcat. So when we found out that Owen would be invited to lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, we were excited that he wrote his own introduction. So this is Owen's introduction in his own words. Owen Stronghaner has attended Bisset for six years. His hobbies are playing flag football on Central's team, soccer, and baseball. His favorite memory of Bisset is participating in the steam club. His favorite color is teal, and his favorite food is hamburger. So Owen is accompanied tonight by his principal. We have Mrs. Erica Rosenbaum with us, as well as his father, Brian. And there are others in the audience as well. If you're here to support Owen, would you please stand? Thank you all for being here. And Owen, whenever you're ready, we invite, if you're able to stand, please join us. And Owen, when you're ready, you may lead the pledge.
.................................
Dr. Lathan and Dr. Leonard, if you would like to come forward for a photo with Owen.
Where did this book come from? Who gave this? Was that? Oh, yes.
Thank you, Owen. Well done. Thank you. Tonight, we are continuing our special recognition for staff members who are celebrating their 25th and 30th year service anniversaries with SPS. We have 37 employees who are celebrating these significant milestones, and we invite them to join us so that we can recognize their dedication. We will recognize our final group of employees at the December meeting. Tonight, our first honoree is celebrating 30 years of service with SPS. Angela Toomey, would you please come forward? Angela is a teacher at Westport Elementary School, and we have a great team from Westport here today. Now, we have six employees joining us who are commemorating 25 years of service with the district. If you would please come forward as I call your name individually. We have Melissa Cable, a teacher at Wilson's Creek Intermediate School. Thank you, Melissa. We have Jennifer Dixon, a teacher at Roberson Elementary School. Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Vicki Gannaway, who works in Nutrition Services as a range cook at Central High School. And we also want to note for Vicki that she has achieved perfect attendance during the last four school years. I don't believe that Sarah Odom is able to be with us tonight. Sarah? Yes, Sarah is. Sarah is an assistant. Mrs. Odom is the Assistant Principal at Cherokee Middle School. Next, we have Ryan Shifitzel, a history teacher at Hillcrest High School.
So cool, yeah.
Thank you very much.
And finally, we have Terry Shifitzel, a teacher at Pleasant View Elementary School. And I think it's a testament to Team SPS, we have so many representatives from the schools and departments here tonight, Nutrition Services and others. So thank you all for being here. We appreciate you. All right, so next, we're going to move forward with honoring excellence. We have an important presentation tonight because SPS, as you know, has been named the Developer of the Year by the Springfield Contractors Association. This is a very prestigious honor. The Springfield Contractors Association made this decision based on the significant impact that Proposition S projects have made on students and the Springfield community. A little extra celebration, which is great. We always encourage that. So this is in recognition for Proposition S projects. The $168 million investment, as you know, improved safety, accessibility, and quality of learning at 39 schools. The award presentation was made Friday night during the 37th Annual Salute to Design and Construction Awards banquet. And we would like to share with you the video that announced this important achievement. It's important for the Springfield Contractors Association to honor the investment that developers make into the Springfield community each and every year. As such, Springfield Public Schools has been entrusted with investing in much-needed improvements to Springfield schools. These improvements have a critical impact to our students and teachers, creating fantastic learning environments and resources to give our students the best chance to succeed. These investments are critical not only for our teachers and students, but are also vital for our continued efforts to retain and attract talent and business to the Springfield area. On April 2, 2019, 61% of Springfield Public Schools voters approved an 18 cent increase to the debt service levy to fund high-priority projects, including renovations, expansion, and new construction. The $168 million bond helped address safety, accessibility, and quality issues with significant expansion of dedicated space for early childhood education. Proposition S projects included safer entrances at 31 schools, a new Ada Fulbright Children's Center, new elementary schools for Boyd, Doubleberry, Sunshine, and Williams, and a new middle school for Jarrett, and a complete renovation and重建 construction of Hillcrest High School. Outstanding stewardship and competitive bids made it possible to address the renovation and new construction needs at Hillcrest all at once, rather than two finishes as originally planned. In addition, a new U-10 Elementary and two elementary school shelters and museums at Dune and Field were added to the original project list due to cost savings.
For Springfield, a huge driver among the quality of life is our public school system. This bond issue is more than just supporting kids. It's supporting our entire community locally and regionally in a lot of different ways, directly and indirectly.
Working with Springfield Public Schools has been fantastic. They're a very collaborative owner to work with. They truly want your input as the contractor. They don't just want you to come build a building for them. They want you to be a part of, a very integral part of that process.
One of the projects we worked on recently in northern Springfield, Williams Elementary, they were able to, once again, bring in the Boys and Girls Club as a partner to that facility. The result is it allows to build a little bit larger facilities, but also to collaborate and share facilities. So, you know, if you're a taxpayer and you're thinking about, are my dollars being used wisely? There's a perfect example of getting, you know, a low expenditure, but huge value at the end of the day in so many different ways. This is the second time that Springfield Schools has actually done this partnership. So when they talk about partnerships, they truly mean it.
So congratulations to Springfield Public Schools for your selection as the 2021 Developer of the Year.
Congratulations, Springfield Public Schools, on being selected as Springfield Contractors Association's Developer of the Year. It's a true honor to be able to work with you at Hillcrest and in Williams. And we thank you from the bottom of our hearts, not only from NAPLs, but from the contracting community here in Springfield.
Congratulations, Springfield Schools. We applaud you. And we look forward to seeing you once again as a Developer of the Year in our community.
Dr. Travis Shaw, would you please come forward? On behalf of SPS, we would like to thank Dr. Shaw and his team for their dedicated efforts to completing the projects on schedule and on budget. And as most of you know, not only were we able to complete those projects on budget, they were accomplished with funds remaining to expedite four other projects that were slated for a future bond proposal. So thank you, Dr. Shaw, for your outstanding stewardship. Thank you. And now, it's time for our Keep on Growing recognition. We're excited to share our monthly recognition and keeping with the theme this year. In addition, we're encouraging leaders to highlight and celebrate SPS staff members across the district who are really demonstrating our strategic plan, the importance of all five focus areas as pillars of our district. The video tonight shares the story of a teacher who uses her energy and her enthusiasm to inspire learning at Cowden Elementary School. So before we start, could we please hear from the Cowden team? So I think this video will also demonstrate that Cowden has lots of enthusiasm to go around. So let's watch the video. Here we are.
My name is Mary Tilton, and I'm a second-grade teacher at Cowden Elementary. I can't even explain how life-changing going to Ron Clark is. Makes you want to be better, do better, just all around be better. It's so amazing.
Mary's energy is electric, like no other teacher I've ever worked with before. It doesn't matter what kind of days she's had. She can turn that off and turn on that energy for her kids. Ron Clark is right up her alley. It's engaging, it's excitement, it's whole-body teaching. That's Mary.
Intentionally learning about what they need to know and making it fun is a game changer. It's the RCA way, and it works.
You really have to put yourself out there. You have to really be bold and be brave and be right there with the students. And Mary, she always wants to be the best teacher that she can possibly be. Her and I brainstorm ideas a lot, and she definitely has the mindset that Springfield Public Schools has with the Keep on Growing motto. It's all about student engagement.
There are years where the kids really want to dance and just dance, dance, dance. And then there are the kids, like this year, that really like to sing, sing, sing. So they like the chanting and the music more so than the getting up and dancing. So we just kind of change our lessons based on the kids' needs. Attendance is easy. They want to be here. They don't want to miss out. Once you see the reaction to the kids and the test scores, it's amazing.
And it is so important for them to feel connection and part of that community, and it helps them feel appreciated and a part of something.
It's a beautiful thing, the influence, the impact that I see I'm making. When these kids are paying attention and want to learn, it changes. It's a game changer. It's a revolution. It's amazing.
So Mary Tilton, will you please come forward so that we may present you with our Keep on Growing recognition?
I want to see one of those dances.
That's so awesome. Those kids. Look at him. This is a cool thing. CRT. This is where it's at. It's so exciting for us to get to see this.
We need to figure out a way to take that cheering section with us everywhere we go. Thank you, Team Cowden. And so that concludes our honoring excellence for this evening, and we'll be back next month with more Keep on Growing recognitions. Thank you.
We'll wait just a minute and give our patrons an opportunity to have another party in the hallway.
How awesome.
Okay, our next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. The recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Is somebody willing to make that motion? Scott will make the motion. Danielle will second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is public comments. And tonight, we have five individuals who signed up for public comments. I will read our statement. "The Board of Education welcomes comments about issues being discussed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment period. The Board Chair will call on individuals in the order in which they signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It is inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, those concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. If you have materials that you want to share, please place them in the tray at the podium, and they will be distributed to board members following the meeting." Our first public speaker is Clarissa Pullman. Pullman, okay. Good evening. Welcome. Pick up. Yep, you can leave him right there. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for listening. My name is Clarissa Pullman, and I'm a Spanish teacher at Pershing Middle School. I'm here today on behalf of Springfield Public Schools World Language Teachers advocating for the reinstatement of middle school language programs. You are receiving a folder that contains a small sample of letters from former students and parents that have written on my behalf. These letters speak louder than any speech I could deliver to you tonight. The mission of our district is to provide engaging, relevant, and personalized learning experiences. World languages at the middle school level ensure that all students, not just our high school students, have the opportunity to explore what it means to be a global citizen and participate in a classroom of rigor. I've taught for SBS for nine years. I teach at one of the three buildings out of the nine middle schools in SBS that still have their world language program. When I began teaching at SBS, almost every middle school in the district had a world language program. I even had a part-time Spanish teacher that worked alongside me at Pershing. Her position was cut due to lack of FTE. Where are our programs today, and what have they been replaced with? To me, learning a language in 2021 should be one of the top priorities, setting our students up for success and helping them to compete in our globalized world. I taught three years of high school before landing my dream job at Pershing. I love teaching an exciting class that provides a high school course to students that gives the opportunity to explore a world outside of Springfield, Missouri. For eight years, I have been able to teach an average of four Spanish I sections. This year, I only have one Spanish I. What is shocking is that there are less than 10 Spanish I classrooms in all of the middle schools in the district combined. This should speak volumes of how our programs are disappearing. Why is this course no longer a priority in 2021 as it has been in the past? We are going backwards. Throughout my career at Pershing, over 1,100 of my Spanish I students have gone on to successfully complete Spanish II at the high school level. Those students have been afforded the opportunity to go on to Spanish IV and V in high school, which makes them eligible to earn the Missouri Seal of Bilitracy, a distinguished award that sets our SBS students apart. I'm disheartened, and I'm fearful for the loss of world language programs at the middle school level. Not only do these decisions impact me personally, a passionate teacher that has a calling to teach our students in person, but it also affects many of our students in so many ways. I'm here to plead with the district to reinstate middle school world language programs. We have driven teachers wanting to teach your children another language that they will be seeing in their future. Learning a second language is one of the most fun and exciting experiences in my life. It is the most beneficial skill that I possess and a skill our students deserve in 2021 and years to come. And I'm sorry that I get choked up, but I'm very passionate about this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Clarissa. Our next public speaker is Jennifer. I feel like I know you. Yes, I do. Welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Jennifer Dinamarca. You're going to hear a lot about foreign language tonight. I am a Spanish teacher at Glendale High School. I've worked in the district since 2008. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. You've heard the statistics. Over the past decade, we've lost over 1,000 students in the high school, a nearly 30% reduction. We've lost 881 in the middle schools, an almost 50% reduction. We've lost over 14 seated classroom teachers due to this decline. These numbers are obviously going in the wrong direction for a 21st-century education. We have the largest district in the state, but only 1% of our students have earned the Seal of Bilitracy, a certification that can earn students free college credit. Board members, you have also seen how foreign language directly supports our mission at SPS, and have heard the statistics regarding the impact of studying a foreign language on test scores and overall outcomes. Do you know that all of these numbers have a face? Have we not yet realized that this has a real impact on not only our students, but the community around us? I myself am a product of SPS and Glendale High School specifically. My passion for language, particularly Spanish, started in high school in the same classroom that I teach in today. Because of the rich cultural experiences and language learning that I experienced there, it gave me opportunities I never would have had otherwise: the opportunity to move abroad, to become fluent in a second language, to teach in an international classroom, to move and travel around the world without fear of not being able to communicate. And lastly, and perhaps the most important, to forge relationships with people that have forever changed my life. It also gave me the ability to return to Springfield, Missouri, and teach thousands of students over the years, including some of the children of our own board members here tonight. There's no reason why we should be making it more difficult for kids to take a foreign language in their elementary, middle, and high school in the 21st century. There is no substitute for a foreign language teacher. No Chromebook, no online program can replace a seated foreign language class. The beauty of the foreign language classroom is that we get to speak to one another and develop our own personal and interpersonal communication skills, skills that are sorely lacking in today's society. Board members, I implore each of you to consider how small our world would be if it only encompassed our little bubble here in Springfield, Missouri. As the world becomes more interconnected, it will become increasingly important to learn new languages and foster new perspectives and ways of looking at the world. Learning a new language will yield valuable opportunities, allowing our students to grow into the best global citizen that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Carl Hurd.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome, Carl.
The whole is equal to the sum of its parts. Let's apply this to the school day for students. Do you, the Board, have some control over the school day? Look at the pie chart. Should have it. Lunch, recess, and changing classes are fixed. Number two, cell phones. Do you, as a Board, know how much of a distraction they are? China was in the news by limiting social media time for their students to three hours a day. What does China know that America does not? Number three, discipline. This varies from class to class. Our 12 does have a detailed policy for major infractions. Consider the discipline not serious enough to meet those guidelines, but interfere with learning. Examples such as bullying, teasing, talking out, texting, or playing games on devices. Consider a North Springfield school with an old building and a high poverty rate. Its test scores go up, up, up. When asked why she was successful, her answer was one word: discipline. A task force on discipline, which includes parents, teachers, and students, would pay huge dividends. Number four, COVID. Common-sense policies about masks, quarantines, and jabs need to be improved. Number five, absences. When flu, weather, and COVID absences are high, policies are needed to help students catch up. Six, technology. This should be age-appropriate and used as one tool, not the only tool, for instruction. Other tools, like textbooks, should be included. Miscellaneous forms pop up: hormones, fire drills, school pictures, CRT, diversity, inclusion, just to name a few. And right, homework. Does homework even exist? I'm wondering. It's a simple way to gain time on task and get more out of school. In closing, you, the Board, can turn our 12 school around from being a failing school. You have control over policies. You have control over policies and one personnel. Question: Do you have control? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Our next public speaker is Jordan Woody.
Ready?
Yes.
I wonder what makes an American adult who has lived in the land of the free their entire life feel as if they should have to be able to take the rights of their fellow Americans? First of all, COVID has 99% survival rate of all Americans of any age. Studies show children's lungs are generally too underdeveloped to be susceptible to or carriers of the virus, and of those children who have fallen victim to COVID, only those with comorbidities died with, not from COVID. Also, masks, if worn properly, only have slight benefits for those around the wearer and if the person is actively coughing and sneezing into the mask. No studies have been conducted on the effects masks have on the social development. It may be stunted by the wearing of the mask. There are three vaccines available for those who feel the need to take them. Vaccinated individual has nothing to worry about from unmasked individuals. If you are worried, be vaccinated and leave our kids alone. As an American citizen, I have the right to decide the risks I am willing to take, and these rights do not end where your fears begin. If you are afraid of COVID, stay home, get a remote job that allows you the peace of mind you deserve, leave me and my children out of your decisions. Oh, and also, why are our kids watching CNN 10? Why is my daughter learning about the Satanic ritual concert that is still killing people as of yesterday and required to take a short quiz on the situation? Choose better events to teach. Something like that does not belong in school. Finally, why are you sending kids home with expensive computers, but they never have homework? It would be really great if you all could come back to earth and do the job you're supposed to.
Thank you, Jordan. Our next public speaker is Pat Scott.
Good evening.
Good evening, Pat.
I may ramble because I didn't have anything bitten down, but can I say that when I watch this online, when I'm sitting back here, there's no microphones here? It's very difficult under the mask. Maybe we'll all be unmasked at some point, but I wish we could have that. And sometimes watching online, I mean, people come to the meetings and try to watch them, and I don't understand why our tech department can't produce the sound. I mean, we can't help this. Some of you know, previous board members, you know, my passion is just to get these kids educated and not be the lowest test scores in the state and not have some board members look at me, "What do you mean, test scores? You know what I mean." We've been focused on CRT and these masks for so long. Well, it seems long. I guess it's a couple of years. But we need to go back to some of the things that I've been talking about for a long time, and that is trying to fix some of the problems in our schools. I'm so proud of the school like Cowden that comes up here, and those kids are so excited. That's wonderful. But as Carl pointed out, we have a school, your school, and Dr. Laura, what she did with that school, we don't need those new buildings. I'm sorry. I'm glad Travis did a wonderful job getting these buildings up, but I'm not sure we needed all that. I don't know one thing. I'm not sure that's improving our education status at all. One of the things that bothers me is that we've given up handwriting. Kids have to have something to do in school for seven or eight hours. Get a handwriting book. Let them practice for 30 minutes or whatever, rather than looking at a Chromebook and sitting there. We don't even know what effect this may have on their brains at some point, and they think they've really done something if the frog jumps off the lily pad and they've got the program right. And some people think, "You're going to learn from that. These kids are going to know how to do math." They don't compare with China. They don't compare with other education systems in the world. We're not even close. So those frogs jumping into the water for the lily pad were an explosion coming off. That is entertaining them, and they are learning at the same time. And I wish I didn't have to be so. It seems like I'm critical, but I don't see what's coming back from the board, from the feedback that you, I know you know what the problems are. We go back before CRT and the masks. TDL, you know what TDL is, all of you, don't you? And most teachers like it. If you don't know what project-based learning is, please find out. I went online a long time ago when I was, oh, I'm running out of time. Teachers love it because you can put the kids in the floor and four or five kids teaching each other with one taking charge. Project-based learning, cell phones in the classroom. I remember when they were started, four or five years ago. Some schools put it off for a long time, middle schools. And all the teachers, teachers have to have the cell phones to make the assignments. They don't. That's when our situation in Springfield and probably all over the country started going downhill. Sorry, I ramble, didn't have anything to say, but I'd like to see more feedback. What is happening? What are we doing?
Thank you, Pat. Our next agenda item is our consent. Our consent items were presented during our study session, and we've had an opportunity to review those, get any questions answered. Therefore, the recommended action is that the board approve Consent Agenda Items 3.01 through 5.01. Charles will make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Shreida will second it. Any discussion?
Lena?
Yes.
I want to make a little comment.
Okay.
This is really loud. Over here. I understand that we have consent agendas to help the board be very efficient in getting the business done, because there's a lot. But occasionally, I find that it's just a lot packaged together, and, you know, it's like, I wonder if it would be feasible to, instead of having one gigantic consent agenda, maybe we could have like two large baskets, just, and I realize that it would add maybe three or four minutes because we'd have to vote twice instead of once, but I think that I would find it useful. Just putting it out there.
Okay, all right.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I sent you some PowerPoints from the Missouri School Board Conference. It was from the session on Robert's Rules. I know it's just Robert's Rules, but there is a slide in there that talks about how to address this issue. So there's an opportunity for us to pull a single or two item out of the consent agenda and vote on it separately, but we can still maintain the consent agenda. So you might want to look at those PowerPoints.
I did, so, and I got clarification, which I appreciate. So the way that would work is you would have to make the motion and then get a second, and then there would have to be a board vote. And so without the majority agreeing to it, you can never really pull an item out. But by putting them in like two categories instead of one, it gives you an opportunity to differentiate your vote if that should come to that.
There's also an opportunity to have a consent agenda item pulled before it goes to...
No, I got clarification on that. That's not possible because the policy states that it would have to be the board. And so the board, am I, did I read that email wrong?
Email that was sent to board members today at the meeting, if you're pulling that item.
I wasn't saying at the meeting.
Right. That was the response in reference to the meeting.
Oh, what about in advance? Can one, let's say you have like a study session, and you have two weeks before the regular session. So at the study session or anywhere within those two weeks before the regular session public notice goes up, can a board member request it?
Right, and we've talked about that if I want...
And board orientation. Just recently, that you were a part of, we've had this discussion in board orientation.
Okay, so can you clarify that again? Because I ask, I know I've asked several times, but I was told that it needs board majorities though.
If you're wanting to change it at the...
Oh, no. How about well in advance?
Right, and so when we covered it during the homeboarding, there was a slide, if not mistaken, as I mentioned, as we went through it. And so we can talk about that offline, but you have, at the study session, you can bring it up or prior to...
The posting.
The posting. But we'll go back.
Oh, I was just going off the board policy. Because the policy doesn't state it as such.
That's during the meeting. Yes.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
I just want to be clear that it could be done any time until it's posted, if it's typically on Friday.
Yes.
And then if it's posted and we're here tonight, then that's when you get, the board would need to vote at the actual meeting.
Before the Friday posting, any one member can ask?
It's my understanding that if there's reason to pull it to a separate agenda item, would that happen automatically? If a board member requested that, would that happen automatically, or is that up to discretion of the person setting the agenda? If she wanted something pulled out of the consent agenda?
That is at the discretion of the board officers and superintendent.
So then at that point, you would make the motion tonight, but if nobody seconds it, and if the board doesn't agree, then you've made your statement that you want it pulled out, and I think that alone is...
No, so I understand how it works. I understand how it works at the meeting, but in advance of the meeting, I'm getting clarification from your question, so if you do it in advance of the meeting, it would be pending the board officers and the superintendent who set the agenda. They get to decide.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's how I read it. So that is exactly how, so in the policy, VDDV, I think, it states that it would be at the discretion of the board. The board would be us when we're here, but it would be the board officers and the superintendent when it's before posting.
Or setting the agenda.
Or setting the agenda.
Correct. Any modifications to the set agenda then follow?
That, under the definition of the board, it would be the board officers and the superintendent.
No.
Ahead of setting the agenda.
The board, I'm looking for that. Miriam, can I just say that we've had a really robust conversation about this at the conference, and the presenter made it clear that the reason for these rules is that board decisions should be made by a board, not by an individual. So that's why it has to go to a vote. So, you know, I understand that it's probably frustrating when you don't get the support of everybody for those kinds of motions, but in that case, it's the will of the board, and because we function as a board rather than as individuals, that's why it's that way. That's just part of the conversation.
I understand that very well. Thank you.
So is there a reason you are bringing this question up publicly tonight as opposed to in our board orientations?
No, I just, it was an idea for like just a little nugget for people to mull it over.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, all right. That concludes our discussion, so we are ready to vote. Our next agenda item is our treasurer's report, and that brings Dr. Mulford to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, board. Good to see you. Just a couple of things to point out this evening. You'll notice in the treasurer's report that our projected annual fund balance did go up. Don't get too excited about that because everything's just best guess at this point, right? So, but things are looking good. We should fall where we want to fall at the end of the year. The other thing I want to point out is Westbrook and Company are finalizing our annual audit. We do expect to have that for you at the December 7th board meeting. Those are the two things I want to point out. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Mulford at this time? Okay, seeing none. I'll read the recommended action. The recommended actions that the board approved, the treasurer's report as presented. Somebody willing to make that motion?
Most.
Danielle will make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Denise will second it. Any discussion?
Denise.
Denise, yes. Okay, seeing none. We are ready to vote. Our next agenda item under information reports is the HR Audit Action Plan. And Dr. Mulford, that's still you at the podium.
Still me, yeah. I'm not going to pull anything up. You've got the attachment in your board packet there, and I will spend a lot of time because it's not a whole lot different than the audit report that was shared with you and the management responses. So very similar, the big difference is there's some timelines in there. I do want to point to the two big rocks, okay? So the first one is our systems, and as you recall, one of the big findings in the audit was we need to look at our enterprise system or HRIS system and look at replacing that with something that's more inclusive. So just so you know, the RFP, the Request for Proposals, was posted today for that. It is about a two-year implementation process. So we'll spend about six months evaluating programs that are out there, making site visits to other schools, trying to really dissect it, and then once we bring forward a recommendation to the board for approval, then the next part will be data conversion and then finally running current system and the new system side by side for a year to make sure all kinks and all that are worked out. So that's in there. The second big rock would be this, I found the mic up here, by the way. Sorry about that.
It's not Scott.
The second page labeled structure, that was the other big rock. So analyzing our current organizational structure and bringing back a recommendation. And so we are engaging Lockton, one of our partners, or Lockton's partners, to help walk us through that. And so that will start kind of mid-December, and we'll have the final report. I should have that by the, sometime in January to the board. We kind of have a structural direction that we plan to go, and then, when I say structural, I meant leadership. I should have said that. But as far as underneath that leadership and how we can be more efficient, we're going to work with this HR company specials. So those are the things I want to point out. Is there anything else that you have questions about that I can answer? In the point? We'll come back about a year from now and let you know how many of those things we've checked off the list.
Thank you. Thank you for following up with the action plan, the team, very quickly after we received the audit report. So, thank you. There's no action on that particular report. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is board policy. The three board policies are posted there for review, and you've had time to review those. We have not, to my knowledge, received any updates on changes for that. So at this time, I will read the recommended action, is that the board adopt all policies as presented. Somebody willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Denise will make the motion. Is there a second? Danielle will second it. Any discussion?
I just want to make a couple of juicy clarifications. So I thought, I guess I didn't read it well the first time, on the election one, we spend money on elections, right? It says that under the no election held, it says if the number...
What page are you on?
You know, why does this have the lines?
Page five.
When I was reading, is it page five?
Page five. It says no election held. Oh, sorry. At the first attachment there.
VDDV.
Yeah.
I could just read it out to you. It says, "If the number of candidates filing for a particular office exceeds the number of positions to be pulled in the election, the election will be held even if the sufficient number of candidates withdraws, so that the number of candidates remaining after the filing deadline is equal to the number of positions to be filled." So you still proceed with election even if...
I think that's because the court has to put, like, when we ran, there were three open positions, there were three write-in options, and so I think...
That's what I was going to say. So is that to allow for the write-ins? Because a write-in, you have up to two weeks before election to ask for a write-in candidate. Is that why it's there? Okay.
I think so.
That's what I just wanted to clarify, because that's a lot of cost going into an election. I just wanted to, okay. And then the other question I had was on the recordings. I think that's the second policy. And it had, and I just, because I could see, all students have devices, you know, phones and whatnot, I just want to kind of put it out there. There's two categories. One was student recordings and one family parent. Hold on, I got to find what page that is.
I think that's on page five as well.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay, so the recorder of the students, okay, so when you read this, it basically says that a student can't make a recording because it would be in violation. But we realize that, you know, there could be situations like in the lunchroom or the hallway or the bathroom. It's so often you see there's something happening, and so somebody wants to, could be, just to get, they're going to do that. So what we're saying is that they have to find an adult or a teacher to ask, or say there's a security issue. We're saying that they can't, goes against the policy to, you know, like, let's say somebody's being harmed and a student wants to like say, "Hey, look, you know, I'm going to record this so that I can..."
So what part of the policy is...
It just says you, students maybe, it says you have to have...
It says students may make audiovisual recordings on district property or at district activities if allowed by a teacher.
If allowed. So, right, so are we allowing that, is what I'm saying? Are we allowing if there's a dangerous situation, if there's students to get their phone out and record it, or we...
It sounds like it's at the discretion of the classroom teacher or the principal for individual classroom... for individual classrooms in individual schools, whether or not students are allowed to have their phones.
Okay, so at each building site?
It sounds like it to me.
Well, I want to get clarification before, but I just want to make sure how, how was that going to be? Is it going to be building level?
Does Penny want to, do you want to clarify any of this?
I could, so, Brett, you may want to help with this, but when we talk about students' recording, generally not allowed. So it's not allowed. However, if we have students, you do record behavior that, let's say, is harmful, shows inappropriate conduct, those students are not disciplined for that conduct as a general rule. Now, if you have a student who is recording a planned act of inappropriate behavior, so sometimes students will plan to, hey, you record it when I am attacking this other student, that student would be disciplined for recording that event. And so we, we don't, when students report unlawful behavior, inappropriate conduct, although it is a violation, they're not disciplined for reporting unlawful behavior.
So even though it's a violation, you're not?
Brett may, Brett may be able to better inform that.
So, good evening. That information is correct. So we, this happens a lot.
Yeah, I, I figured it would.
So we have a fight at a, in the lunchroom or something, and kids sometimes record those types of situations. That information can be used when we're doing an investigation if the kid chooses to share that, the video with us. It, on, on surface, it's a violation of, don't, you know, don't record at school, but we would not discipline the kid over sharing that video with them.
Just, I just wanted, and you know, along the same lines, it said something about, you know, if you go to an event where everybody's invited to, like a soccer game or what have you, you can record. But if it's only certain people, like families invited to, then you need the permission. It's cited at graduation ceremony. But surely we don't need, are we going to like, give permission at graduation? I don't remember doing that. Like, hey, you can record. Surely it's allowed. Just, it's cited graduation ceremony.
I think there's probably some implied.
Okay, so there's wiggle room in all this, because when you read it, like, to the line, you're like, oh. Okay, just, for now.
If I could add in, going back to the first question, there is statutory guidance that once a candidate files, even if they want to withdraw, we have to leave their name on the ballot. So that's what that's referring to.
Oh, really? Even if they withdraw?
Yep. So they, if they file, once they file. So they could come in the next week and say, I'm pulling my name, we still have to put it on the ballot.
It's not just the write-in two weeks before, it's because you can't take your name off?
Right.
Well, I didn't know that. Thank you.
Yeah.
You can pick up a pocket and not turn it in.
I only know that because I experienced it.
When you file it.
Okay, any other questions before we vote? Okay, seeing none. We did get the first and second. I'm trying to remember. Okay, all right, then we are ready to vote. Motion passes. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is new business and our annual visitor, Dr. Jay Anderson.
That's right.
To talk about the school calendar. Welcome.
Super excited.
Last time.
That's right. This will be your last time.
I want a slow clap for that.
My, my hardest role. All right. Good evening to you. It's good to be with you on my 11th
presentation of our school calendar. And tonight I bring to you the first read of the 2022-2023 academic calendar as proposed. And so this is the foundation for all of our other work calendars. And so we all have work calendars, and here's contracts of teachers and, and other employees. And so this is the foundation for all of that work. And so I appreciate you listening to some of our input that we had for this. And so I want to highlight a couple of things. So over the years, we have had a couple of different ways to put together a calendar. There could be a combination of various ways to do so. But now it's just based upon school hours. And so the magic number is 1,044 contact hours with students. And we surpassed that at all of our divisions, elementary, middle, and high school. We run over 1,100 learning hours. And so we've got that covered. And so that's always a good thing to be compliant with DESI. And within the DESI guidelines, we also choose to honor select holidays. We honor Martin Luther King Day, Labor Day, President's Day, and Memorial Day. And we also work to have a non-schedule, a non-cancellable, cancelable spring break. And many of our counterparts have adopted that, our neighboring districts, but some still have not. And, and when you share families or students or teachers or staff members, sometimes that gets a little difficult. So we always honor that. And then we take it into smaller stakeholder groups. And so we get input from various committees and groups, and we appreciate that. And this year, we added, using Thought Exchange, to the input and go a little bit deeper for affirmation on some things, and well, as well as make sure that people know, hey, have you considered this? And we always love that feedback, and some of it's great, and some of it's not as helpful, like, please don't schedule school on stormy days. We can't necessarily control that, but we do the best that we can with what we have. So as we go forth, I want to remind you that the, our school start date is driven by legislative action that happened a couple of years ago, and it has nothing to do with school and learning. It has to do with a tourism bill that impacts us. And so it basically says we cannot start school 14 calendar days or 10 school days prior to the Labor Day. And so for this 2022-2023, the first date that we could start is August 22nd. As we go forth, and we get input from the stakeholders as well as input, those, these are the discussions and actions that we have. And I want you to know that I work regularly, not with our internal stakeholders, but external. We connect with our, our higher education. I work with a committee of them. They share calendars, but a lot of them wait for us, which is nice, to set their calendar. And a lot of other districts outside of us are also waiting to see, what are you putting out there? And so that we can be mostly on the same schedule. Not all the same schedule, but pretty close to. So as we, I'm going to give you a preview of what this calendar looks like. And there's a couple highlights, because there are, through the interactions, a notable change from last year is an extended, we brought two calendars, option A and option B, when we started. One was, this is how we've always done it in the past, and then this is our new one. And this was the one that was very favorably approved by input. And so I'm going to walk you through some of the highlights that will be on this calendar. First, the start date is Monday, August 22nd. I'll draw your attention on the screen to that. And this is to capture as many learning days as possible in the first semester. And so over here on the calendar, you will see a breakdown of days, our beginning and our end quarters. And when you add those quarters up, they equal our two semesters, and our two semesters are not equal. They are broken down by, I think it's 80 and 92 is our breakdown. So they're not as equal as we're hoping to be. And so that's why we have to capture as many learning days, and we start as soon as we can in August. The second thing that I'll highlight is in this October right here. So we always, we generally try to end a quarter with a teacher workday. And after our first quarter, we want the opportunity to make sure we connect with our parents through Parent/Teacher Conference Week. And so after we end our first quarter, we start this window at Parent/Teacher Conference Week. If you've had younger children, and now I think that based upon who came to my door at Halloween, with some middle school age kiddos, that falls on the 31st. And then we also have a date for November 1st. Sometimes the, the fun at school is a little extended or a little exhausting, and our teachers deserve a well-deserved, they have, they need more time to do their parent/teacher conferences. They've taken a lot of time to fill out report cards. So we build in a professional day at the end of October, not only to get their grades in, but to connect with parents as part of the Parent/Teacher Conference Week, and do some professional learning. So no students on those days. If you train your eye continuing the November calendar, you'll see that we have added an extended Thanksgiving break, a full week, instead of the two days that it has been traditionally with three days off. All students and staff will be off of that week for that time. Come back, we'll finish the month. And notice that December 22nd will be the last day of learning for staff and students. And we will have staff bring, come back for their workday on January 3rd, prior to the semester start, to make sure that everything is good to go when it comes to second quarter and first semester report cards for parents, as well as planning to start the year. Students come back on January 4th. We go through a full third quarter, which is 45 days on this calendar, up through, and during that time, we honor, we have a few holidays as well that both land on a Monday. In March, we have our spring break, and this is critical, especially with our higher education partners. We have many of our secondary students that need to end their semester both first before winter, and also with OTC and MSU and brewery that takes college courses, and we need to be aligned with them. So we share this as soon as possible. Our fourth quarter will start March 20th. Between March 20th and the end of the school year, that's a very long quarter, and it always feels a little extra long, because we have state assessments in there as well as our own end-of-year assessments. So we built in a little bit of an extra time. We always have had an April mid-quarter day for teachers to do some professional learning to prepare for the end of the year. But we also were able to put in an April break, follow that, helps break up that fourth quarter. And then we have a guaranteed last day of May 25th. So at this time, I will answer any questions that you have, or reminder that this is first read only. This will come back to you on December 7th because it requires a second read and approval from you. But this is just a time to, question?
I have a question.
Yes.
The, I know that we try to plan our hours for fall and spring, and I wrote down 80, 92, and it being lopsided, so that our students who are taking college credit-
Yes.
-be aligned with our sister institutions.
Yes.
So is that 80 and 92 still going to work for those?
It does. And, and, you know, OTC is our biggest partner on this one, because of how many participate in their program. But when I connected with MSU, Brewery, Evangel, they all indicated that there were no issues.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Denise, and then Sharita.
So I think I asked you this question before, because I had heard from some of our teachers in our four blocks, high schools, which is only two. So this means that our first, the students in their first semester classes would have 80 days of instruction, and second semester would 92 days of instruction. So, and are those, some of those folks on this committee that haven't had an opportunity to provide?
Yes, absolutely. And they, they shared the same exact thing, and it, it makes the first semester feel, and, and first two quarters, a little more rushed. And then they have the appropriate amount of time. You have end-of-year assessments at both ends of things. But we, when you throw in some assessments, it, it's a little bit not as pushed, or feels as pushed, but we also have graduating high school seniors at the end of the year.
Was my, next question was, what would be the last thing for seniors then, in the second semester?
Yeah. And I don't have an answer for that yet, because once this calendar goes forward, then we contact MSU to say, hey, when can we get the big JQH arena for our graduations? Generally, we try to keep it contained within the last two weeks, so we don't lose too much of that time.
So I think the, the critical thing for me as a board member is that some of our teachers that teach those advanced place classes that are, you know, really working hard to get what they need to have taught for the AP courses-
Absolutely.
-in that first semester, that they've had an opportunity to have input in.
Absolutely. And, and the feedback is exactly as you expressed it. It's a continuing concern, and that's why we need to, I believe, in my opinion, continue to advocate that local control of when the school's calendar, calendar starts, come back to us.
Thank you.
Sharita, yes?
I know, I probably, I think I've asked this question before in the past, but can you remind me how the built-in snow days fit in with the mandatory last day of April 25th?
Great question. I was hoping somebody would ask, so I'm going to give you your Starburst after this. So AMI is something that's new to us in the last two to three years. We, we have alternate methods of instruction. And in the past, we have built-in make-up days. Because we go over the amount of hours that we do, we do not have to, we have that time built in, so we don't have to come back and make it up, unless we have more than 36 hours, roughly, of instruction to make up. And if we get to that point, that's generally going to be found in February and March, and on occasion, those freaky April storms that come around. And so at that time, the district can say, hey, we're going to fall short of days. We'll still finish school on May 25th, but because of, we're, we've had three, four days in snow, if we have a snow day tomorrow, if we can't come, you need to know that we're going to be teaching online, and everybody's going to report through their device for learning.
Along the same lines, in the past, the calendars have said, you know, there's that hard day, last day. But let's say, the last day could be as early as-
Yep.
Can you explain that? It has something to do with snow days.
Absolutely. And that's not on this calendar. Since May 25th is our earliest, as well as our latest, unless we have more than. And so that's a difference to this calendar.
Because you've-
Because we're not making up-
Built-in the snow days. So that's the earliest and the last, that's the last day.
And so, as families always ask, when can I go on vacation, or when's the last day of school, so that we can honor this? That's the day.
So this is new? Is this the first year where the early, earliest is the same as the, it's the real day?
That's the day.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And period.
Any other questions for Jay tonight?
This will come back to you on December 7th for a second read and final approval from you. Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you to you and your team for working through this puzzle every year. And thank you for those who participated in giving input through Thought Exchange as well. That takes us to our next agenda item, unfinished business, our 2022 legislative platform. We presented that during study session. We've had, we've talked about the adjustments from the previous year, what was removed, what's been added. And so I will read the recommended action. The Board of Education approves the recommended updates to the attached Springfield Public Schools 2022 Legislative Platform for the 2022 Legislative Session. Somebody willing to make that motion?
Some.
Sharita will make the motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Scott will second it. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, seeing none. We are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is our compensation payment adjustment. That brings back Dr. Mulford.
All right. As you may recall, in September, when we presented to the board our plan for the HARP/ESR, or ESR3 funds, one of the items contained in there was a one-time payment for all staff members, as something we were considering. So we have worked through that, got the blessing of our auditor, and we're bringing back a recommendation to you tonight for the approval of a compensation payment adjustment. For those that were on the board last year at this time, you may recall that the board did something similar last year. And so we're following the same format. The recommended amount is $1,000 per employee, full-time employee. If they are less than a .5 employee, it'd be half of that at $500. Payment to be made on Friday, December 17th. And this is just in recognition of the additional work that we know everyone is taking on to make this school year a success as a result of the continued pandemic and challenges around, various challenges that come with that. So with that said, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Dr. Mulford at this time?
I, I had a question. Did you say this was coming from ESR money?
I'm sorry.
Where, where are these funds coming from?
Yeah, so the, the ESR3 funds is what's making this possible.
Thank you. Good question. Give me a second to put my thought out there. So, in the past, we, you know, look at, from a budget aspect, you know, like, this is how we're going to spend our ESR dollars. And then we looked at, with a fine-tooth comb, you know, the extra 9 million- And then we looked at, with a fine-tooth comb, you know, the extra 9 million. But in terms of the backbone of the budget, you know, I was, we're not privy to that. So I don't know how this figure fits into the big picture. But, so the sense I get with, and maybe this is the way it is with all public entities, is that everything is like the same, like everybody always gets the same bonuses, the same raises. Hear me out on this, I'm going somewhere. But with a lot of enterprises, it doesn't quite work that way. So, you know, bonuses are dependent on like the job that you perform, like what role you have or how you perform it, all that jazz. So, and I, and I understand that everybody is integral into making the system work. You know, the bus drivers, custodians, the food service, central administration, teachers in the classrooms. But we're using, where I'm getting with this is since these are ESR dollars and they're targeted to fill in the gap that was caused by COVID. And I realize everyone is vital, but there's this heavy burden on the people that are in the classrooms trying to fill this gap. You know, not only do I have to do third grade this year, I've got to teach second grade too, right? And so the weight seems to be heavier at my virgin eyes, right? I, I'm new to this. So just looking at it for, you know, me, I see the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the interventionists in the trenches. Not saying everybody's not working hard, but has, like going forward in the future, is there some idea of, or can people be compensated differently? So like that grab bag of teachers, paraprofessionals, interventionists, I don't know. All the people that are there, like doing like the ABC, you know, all that, you know, pulling their hair out, struggling, like do we give them $2,000? Because we feel that it's a heavier burden or has, do we think about, like, has that come up or?
Yeah, so a couple of things I want to say. First, it is not a bonus, let me get very clear.
Correct, it's not a bonus.
It is not a bonus. It is a compensation payment adjustment for the work that they're doing, right? That's correct.
It's a one-time payment, that's why I used the word.
It is a one-time payment. And we don't expect that it will happen again after this year, right? Now, we probably didn't expect it last year either, that's the caveat. But we do expect that this would be the last time something like this would happen. So those are the, a couple of things I want to mention. But that said, when we were talking about this one-time payment, we did engage with our NEA representation, Laura back there. And we all agreed the easiest thing would be just a flat amount for everybody versus trying to differentiate. And I think sometimes that causes more issues around appreciation of individuals. And the reality is, everybody, the additional workload is applying to everybody. And we, we may think in our own position that we're the one affected the most, but at the district level, we see every person in every position, and we're telling you, it's everybody. And, you know, the nice thing about this is our lowest paid individuals, ones who probably need it more than anybody, are going to get the same amount as the highest paid individuals. And so at this, especially at this time of year, I think that's particularly meaningful.
I really like this better than percentages, yeah.
We did talk about, just so you know, so the whole board knows, we did talk about if we tried to do different levels and we just decided there's more headaches with that than just doing a flat amount. But I get that point.
No, well, thank you for explaining. I just, you know, I just putting it out there, you know? Just the thought's going around and it's nice to share it and talk.
Laura did say she thought the deputy superintendent should get paid more.
Oh, yes.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, just to give some clarification for context, on last year's compensation payment adjustment was built into collective bargaining agreements early on. And because we didn't, and those dollars came from the original budget. So, so the, so I'm asking.
So it, the way I understand it.
The compensation payment adjustment last year was built into if there are dollars available, then there would be some sort of adjustment at a later time. And so there was. And it went to, and so, and, but that came out of our regular budget dollars.
Due to uncertainty of funding, a COLA was not given last year.
That's correct.
It was tied to revenue. We did give a COLA this year.
That's right.
But, but of course, we wanted to be able to do more, right? So this one, this one-time compensation adjustment is a recognition that we, we wanted to do more. We just feel we could commit the budget.
But this is ESR, which is why you feel that it won't happen next year? Am I understanding that?
And we're also hopeful that we'll be a little bit past some of our challenges we're dealing with as.
Right, but from a budgetary standpoint, the reason you said that is because it's ESR. And we don't anticipate, or maybe, maybe there'll be extra, but we don't anticipate at this point.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I, I, I guess I haven't taken the motion for sure, but I just would make a comment by saying that I think it is wonderful that administration in looking at how to use our ESR funds in the September presentation, see and have listened to the needs of all of our staff. From nutrition to transportation, to our teachers, our secretaries. And so I, it's still a challenging time in our district. We're, we're still moving forward. And so I'm so thankful for their commitment to our kids and also our staff's commitment to bringing forth the best recommendation for, for our staff, for all of our staff. So I'll read the recommended action and then we'll see if there's any more discussion. The recommended action is that the board approve the compensation payment adjustment as presented. Somebody like to make that motion?
Don't move.
I'll second it. I'm sorry, I couldn't see who.
Sharita. Okay, Sharita made the motion, Marian will second it. Is there any discussion before we vote? Okay, seeing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is Dr. Travis Shaw, bond project updates and actions. We'll start with change orders, it looks like.
Yes, good evening. It's good to be back. You have a very small list in front of you. Something that probably stands out to you is the deduct for Boyd. When we get to closing out projects, all of our main projects have allowances built in bids that are provided to us because there's always unknowns in construction. And so for Boyd, there was over 370,000 of unused allowance that will be coming back to the district as far as that bid goes. You do see a little bit of additional furniture that was needed for both, for Boyd, Hillcrest and Williams. And then our IT team continues the safety and security piece with phone upgrades at four different sites. So the total for your approval this evening is actually a deduct of $220,163.48.
All right, any questions for Travis at this time? All right, the recommended action is that the board approve the change orders and agreements as presented.
Don't move.
Sharita will make the motion. Bless you, Scott. No. Danielle will second it. Any discussion?
Congratulations, 302,000 is great. Or 370,000, I mean, 220 altogether, but 370 at, at four is great. We're committed for that.
Never happens in construction.
It happens not upon all times with this.
When you have projects, Boyd was an example of something where we had a lot of site work that was a little bit unpredictable. So therefore, in order to take less, take less the risk off of the district, we asked that there be specific allowances put in every bid that was brought to us. Then it didn't end up resulting in as much money as we thought it might. And so therefore, it comes back to us.
Good way to manage it.
But cost savings is really how we've been able to do those extra projects overall, right? So we've had lots of cost, cost savings across the board.
Yes.
You think it's because you made all the purchases before costs rise for, you know, for all the steel lumber?
We got into construction at a very good time.
Very good time, is that so?
Yes. We do not want to be starting new construction right now. It's not a good time to be doing it.
And good management.
A lot of people involved in that.
Okay, we have a first and a second discussion, and I believe we are ready to vote. That's okay. Motion passes. Yes, motion passes.
Presentation up.
There we go.
I'm going to let you show it to you because I'm not. Thank you.
Next, we have our quarterly bond update.
Okay, so this evening's update is going to be a little bit shorter than it previously has been, mostly because we're kind of in the not really exciting parts of construction with our projects. And so I didn't want to bore you with a lot of concrete and steel pictures. We do have a great drone video to show at the end. But we'll be talking about Hillcrest, Jarrett, York, and the two storm shelters that we've just recently started. This is a, an image you are very familiar with seeing. I love this image because this was what was the draft project sequencing. But we brought up York from the bottom and we're working through that. But the red oval represents where we are and where we started. And so you can see that we've come a long way through this process and we are still right on track at this time to finish all of our projects by the end of the next calendar year prior to the start of 2023. So everything is still on schedule for that. This is again the other example where our projects within the Springfield community exist and the completion dates and scheduled completion dates for the remaining projects. This gives you an outline of the financials we were just talking about. You can see on the left, the fund source from what the bond was to premium and interest, the district contribution. You can see on, in the middle column, this was what the estimates were for all of these projects. The blue does represent completed, closed-out projects. Very soon, we'll be able to highlight both Boyd and Williams as being completely closed out. And then you can see where the total actual project budgets exist and what currently is on track of being spent, 193.7, leaving about 3.9 available still to be able to be utilized. And whether that looks like design moving forward, whether it looks like some things that come up that we're not expecting, we've got some fish in still. So the financials are still in really, really good shape. This is taken directly from the bond financial report that you see monthly in the treasures report. So you can see that each month. Again, here are the projects currently under construction and we expect those to be finished. So as we look at Hillcrest High School, the, the front of that building is looking very much like this right now. And so it's exciting to see the renderings come to life. But these are the aerials of the work that's being done at this point in time. All of the renovation of this project is pretty much completed. It's now new construction. So we tore down the old existing academic wing and we're rebuilding that back up. There's been a lot of concrete poured, a lot of block laid, steel is beginning to come up. You can see those pictures. And then you get an idea, this is the, this main student center as you enter the building and what it looks like and the new renovated piece that kids get to walk into every single day. And just the new graphics, the new branding that's been put on this project that really gives a sense of pride for the students and staff and the whole entire Hillcrest community. Jarrett continues to move rapidly. We, you can see how massive this building is going to be. The piece there in the middle that doesn't have any construction, that will all get filled in. So a lot of steel, a lot of concrete. And you can see the back part, which represents where we'll have a full-size practice field for our football teams. We'll have a full-size track for our kids to practice. We'll have those facilities that we've never been able to have for Jarrett since we've been on such a limited site. Main set of stairs running through, that big concrete block structure that you see in the bottom left actually is a stage that will be able to be housed for not only right in the common area, but it will be for performances, it will be for assemblies. It will be quite a facility for our middle school kids. And you can see the continued steel that goes up daily. York Elementary, excited about this project. You can see from the aerial, the storm shelter is up. You can see the elevator shaft is up. Somebody said the other day, there's no elevators at York? Yeah, there is, right there. We've got a lot of steel coming on. And so we'll start seeing that building being, going up very, very quickly. And you can see just the difference in what that was just three months ago, how much progress has been made. And then our storm shelter gyms are early in their construction, both at Field and Twain. And you can see at Field Elementary where that gymnasium is going to be placed, I think kind of behind and in the middle there. We did have to take some playground equipment out temporarily, it'll be replaced. But a lot of work going on there. And then also at Twain Elementary, you can see in the bottom left where that structure will be placed, right off the end there, which will be very accessible to the community as well as our staff and students. And just a quick update on DAR, even though it's not a bond project, moving right along, still scheduled about February for this to be finished. Unique, unique building, but it's going to be so fantastic for our students to be able to be in that building as well. And we will watch the latest video.
Thank you, Travis, for the quarterly bond update. And also thank you for accepting the SPS award Friday night at the Springfield Contractors Association. I did get to say that, we had a lot of people to recognize, but thank you for that. And I'm reminded of that, that honor that SPS is receiving would not be made possible if it wasn't for every person who voted yes and believed in our school needs, our kids, our teachers. And so the honor goes to our community members who believed in doing what's right and what's best and keeping our students and staff safe and providing them with incredible learning environment so that our teachers and our staff can do what they do and that's take care of our kids. When I was at the Jarrett groundbreaking ceremony, I'm reminded of this update. And I had some Jarrett teachers who were all coming up to, to do the digging. Thank you, I'm doing the motion, digging. And they said, and it was several different teachers, and I, I did not know them. I knew that they were Jarrett teachers, but they said, do you have any idea how excited we are about this new building? And I said, tell me, like, tell me, you know, why? And she's like, well, we have one outlet in our current, you know, room. We have to unplug everything, we got wires hanging down, you know? So they just said, we can't wait to have a facility that works for our current needs and for our students' needs. So when I see this campus of Jarrett, it's just like those teachers. So, when I see this campus of Jarrett, it's just like those teachers are giving the support that they need from our community. So, it's, it's just very exciting. So, thank you, Travis, for keeping those projects on, on task and, and helping us be good stewards of our dollars and telling our story to be transparent to those who believed in us.
And just to quickly add to that, I, you know, that was, my biggest takeaway was the community, you know, this is, this is a community-wide recognition.
That's right.
And part of that community-wide recognition are all of the hundreds contractors that, and architects and engineers and subcontract, subcontractors that have teamed up and partnered with the district to make this possible. Because without them and the workforce that, that they have that interest.
That's right.
You know, it doesn't happen either. So, um, we've really been blessed, have a lot of great contractors want to work with the school district because applicantees at times can be challenging to work with. We have a lot of hoops.
Yeah, yes, but thank you for making that point of recognition as well.
Travis, can I ask you a couple of questions? So, York is, you know, hair down and building on that side, but Jarrett is in a completely different location. So, the students are still in Jarrett and then they just get to move over to the new building. Okay. And then Hillcrest, I, I guess I didn't realize how massive the, so, okay, I thought it was adding and updating, but no, it's like the whole, so what, what are the students doing when you're redoing these areas?
Yeah, so it's, um, you know, that was the first project that we decided we really wanted to utilize a construction manager at risk delivery.
They're still in that building while you're.
Bringing that contractor onboard right from the beginning, and this particular contractor had just gotten, just been finishing up at Jefferson City, doing the very same thing. So, we knew that the complexity of that project was at a level that we hadn't dealt with. And so, yeah, it has taken so much planning ahead of time, great work with the district leaders who have worked with their staff. That building was originally billed for 1600 to 1800, I don't know the exact number of capacity, and we're about 1100. So, we had some space to start with that we could move people around.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we did have some space that, that we can move people around. Uh, we've also had to get very creative. Um, and so, when you take down the main academic two-story wing, you put everybody in the rest of it, you get very creative. We, we built some temporary classrooms in places that they will be using.
You tried to probably do a lot in the summer, but it still has dragged on through the year.
It's a 30-month project.
Yeah, oh.
It's, it's a massive renovation with also new.
What percentage of Hillcrest would you say is renovated, like?
Well, the easy thing to say is that the cafeteria has not been touched and the science wing has not been touched.
Everything else is?
Even the hyper, we put in new bleachers and we, we did new HVAC in that space.
So, it's gonna look completely different when I go see it?
It's 100%.
Cause I, I saw it before, wow, okay.
We looked at building new, but it was $60 million to build new.
And is it, and it's not just a facelift, it's behind the walls trying to.
Oh, it's, yeah, it is, everything was gutted.
Like plumbing, H, everything, HVAC, electrical. Nice. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Travis, for your updates. Our next agenda item is our superintendent update.
Registration for S P S University began Monday, November 15th. An email was sent to parents and community members, encourages them to sign up for the event, which is from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Tuesday, December 14th at Parkview High School. Participants will be able to connect with community partners during the Resource Fair and attend a variety of workshops tailored to help parents support their students' learning and for the community to engage with board members. We'll also provide a free meal and childcare for those who attend. Everyone is welcome to attend, but we ask that they RSVP by December 6th so that we can plan to accommodate them because we're providing meals and also childcare and also translation services. The Saturday winter vaccine event will be held at Williams Elementary School. This is part of our collaboration with the Springfield Green County Health Department and Community Foundation of the Ozarks to encourage everyone to give the gift of health this holiday season by receiving the COVID-19 vaccine. The event will be, uh, November 20th from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. at Williams and repeated again on December 11th at the Health Department Vaccine Clinic on Battlefield Road, which I know, I've, I've heard is in the old Toys R Us building. Later this week, we will be seeking feedback again from our community about the three-tiered start times and how they are impacted by it. This information will assist us as we continue to consider options for modifying this structure next school year. That survey will go out to parents in the community later this week, and it will actually be a separate survey that goes out, and then we'll also embed it into our staff and parent newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lathan. Our next agenda item is for comments. I, um, wanna see if anybody has any comments at this time. I, I do wanna mention that since our last meeting, um, six of us were able to attend the Missouri School Board Association Conference in Kansas City. Lots of good learning, um, connecting with other, um, you know, local communities and some of our partners there, as well as our administrative staff. And I just wanna point out that we had two S P S presentations that were able to be there, and I wanna thank, first, it was Dr. Holt. Um, Brandy Harris drove up just for that presentation, Boys and Girls Club, and, and, Denise was also the board member there. And they talked about the partnership between Williams Elementary and Boys and Girls Club and, and how to create those partnerships and, and to share with, um, across the state. So, it was really neat to see board members, superintendents respond to that, ask a lot of questions and, um, to inspire those type of partnerships and, and how when you're either renovating a building or about to build a building, that those are good times to even look at having those partnerships when things are, are starting as well. The other presentation, Dr. Anderson and Kristy Davis, our executive director for early childhood. She's a director, director. And, and develop, and.
Director of early childhood and parents as teachers.
Parents as teachers, thank you, thank you for that. And they, um, did an excellent job presenting about the, um, early childhood expansion within the district and how, um, anticipating the state making that provision for additional funding and how we had to create space and all that stuff. So, I just wanna thank our S P S people for making the drive up to present, to share our best practices with our entire state.
And our students who.
Yes.
Yes, as well.
Yes.
Support.
Yes. Yes, we had a student exposition there as well. Thank you.
They were from the Health Science Academy.
Yes.
Mercy and then.
Was it A O C?
The Arts.
Uh-huh.
Academy of Fine Arts.
The, yes, the.
Okay, yes.
I just wanted to say that this was my first opportunity to attend a, um, Missouri School Board Association Conference, and I really enjoyed, uh, the sessions that I went to. Um, they had some really good information and lots of really good discussions, and all of their downloads were available, so if any of the board members liked to share, um, any of the, um, have any of the handouts that I received, you're hap, I'm happy to share them because they were really good. Um, I didn't share all of them, but I shared the first one just because I was excited about my first session, and I didn't share the rest of them, but if you, if you would like any of the other ones that I attended, you're welcome to have those.
That was something that is nice, that you didn't have to be jotting on notes or taking pictures, at least they made it available.
I did both.
You did both, okay, okay, yeah. All right. Any other board comments at this time?
I, I had a question. So, I'm, um, still getting feedback from a lot of parents and guardians regarding the transportation issue. I know that you had provided an update to the board, I think, a couple of weeks ago, but where are we at on that issue?
As it relates to transportation, um, you're referring to the change on November 8th, when we changed the, and, uh, there was a question from a board member about attendance last week, uh, what was the largest drop, and then how we share that information. We have not received any additional information or concerns that I'm aware of as it relates to the change.
Yeah, he has specific questions. I mean, we changed the change with the fact, fact last Monday, overall went really well. Let's have a couple of small, again, when you're changing routes around. But as far as onboarding new drivers is what I'm assuming you're getting at.
Correct.
So, we did, once that announcement went out, we did see an uptick in our applicants. And so, we have several in process. Can't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but I wanna say it's in that 10 to 12 range that are in process. They had, uh, what we need, I don't remember, uh, we needed 18, I think, 18 or 20 drivers. So, if all those people make it through, pass their physical, all that good stuff, then we will significantly close the gap. So, we're keeping a close eye on it, and we don't see us being able to go back where we were before, uh, January, but if we can, we certainly will.
Would we phase in, um, additional routes as we get drivers?
That is possible, yes.
Most neediest of, we said we'd, we would target the most neediest of schools to bring them back in that order, providing that.
I, I, I too have heard from, you know, various parents, and I, and I think some of the comments I've heard are, um, the adjustments from the middle school, third tier, that was a, that was a, a significant change for that tier, and then as well as the change on November, you know, so it is understandable that that is a burden and a, you know, and, and, um, and a frustrating, um, time to be in, in that. So, yes. And, and I know you're, I know you all are working to find solutions and to bring any solutions that the board can be a part of as well to us as, as you see fit. Any other board comments at this time?
I'll just mention one thing real quick. This is a time of the year where most of our high schools are doing their musicals. I think they're going on all across town, so if any of you're interested or enjoy that, and Stevie could probably give you the, the, the list of what all is playing everywhere across town, but the thing that's so neat about it is a lot of our students are extremely talented and they've put a lot of work into a lot of the musicals and a lot of, and some of them are bringing students from their theater schools in to perform in some of the musicals and as well as the staff that are working very hard. So, just kinda give them a shout out. There's a lot of hard work, uh, along with all the athletic events and all the other activities, but this is kind of that musical time of the year, so if any of you wanna, all right, if you wanna get the schedule and go to any of them, they're great, they usually do a great job. Our kids are so talented.
And they can do this, this year.
Yes.
And they get to do it this year.
Have to do it this year.
Yep. Any other comments at this time? Okay. Our upcoming, upcoming, um, meetings, of course, um, we have Holiday Thanksgiving, the district is closed, the 24th through the 26th next week. We have our, um, Board of Education Candidate Workshop, those who have picked up petitions, on Tuesday, November 30th at 5:30. We'll, um, meet here at Craft to go over some of the details regarding that process. Tuesday, December 7th, we have our, um, one and only combined December board meeting. And I believe that that is already on our calendar, so just wanna make note of that. At this time, it's our plus delta. If there's any plus deltas for tonight, go write it on a post-it note and give that to Tammy, um, on your way out the door. We do need to go into executive session, and the recommended action is that the board meets in executive session to discuss legal, real estate, and personnel matters as provided in sections, in section 610.021, subsections 1, 2, 3, and 13 of the revised statute in Missouri. Would somebody like to make that motion? Okay, Scott will make the motion, Danielle will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Thank you for those of you who have joined us in our regular session.